I'd like to call the March twenty twenty five meeting of the Edison Public Library Board to order at seven oh one P M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As required by the Open Public Public Meetings Act, N J S A ten goal forty one. One adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by notices given to the home news Tribune of New Jersey, the Starlerge of North New Jersey, News India Times, Jersey City, and New Jersey posted on the Edison Public website and bulletin board and given to the township's clerk office. Mister Climen, please call the hall. Miss Mead?
Here.
Miss Pam?
Yes, here.
Mister Patel, here. Miss Kavadi?
Yes.
Uh, Miss Singh?
Yes.
Mister Romano?
Here.
Miss Leary?
Here.
Mister Divasqua?
Here.
You have a call. Okay, great. Um, so first order of business was we're going to be going into a closed session. Um, so I will read the resolution. Be resolved by the Edison Public Library Board of Trustees that the board will now enter to a closed session to discuss matters related to personnel as these matters involve confidential employee information protected by the state. And I have a motion.
No questions.
Second?
Second.
Everybody, aye?
Aye.
All right. Okay, great. Um, we can just ask everybody except for the trustees to. It will not be too long, so we will come and get you when we're done. Okay, we are going to um look at the resolution. Alan, if you could please read this verse.
Um, we need to resolution first and motion in second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Take my glasses off. Resolution for return of temporary disability funds to library staff. Whereas the library's payroll was processed through the township prior to January twenty twenty three, which did not include temporary disability insurance, T D I coverage for library staff. And whereas the library board in an effort to provide an additional benefit to employees beginning in twenty twenty three, when the library began to process its own payroll, instituted a deduction from staff paychecks for temporary disability insurance premiums. And whereas the deductions from staff paychecks were remitted to the State of New Jersey Department of Labor for coverage beginning January one twenty twenty three and continuing through December thirty first twenty twenty four. And whereas it was later discovered that the funds deducted from employee paychecks were deposited into an inactive account with the State of New Jersey. And as a result, temporary disability insurance coverage was never activated by the State of New Jersey for Edison Library staff members. And whereas the library board became aware that the State of New Jersey had not established temporary disability insurance coverage after learning the state denied a disability claim submitted by an employee in twenty twenty four on the grounds of the employer was not enrolled in the state's plan. And whereas the library board took action to resolve this issue by submitting a resolution to the New Jersey Department of Labor in December twenty twenty four to formally address the matter and rectify the situation. And whereas the library board has committed to returning the funds deducted from employees' paychecks for temporary disability insurance contributions in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four as part of their obligation to the staff. And whereas the library board acknowledges the need to provide back wages to the two employees who applied for temporary disability benefits in twenty twenty four and were denied in accordance with contractual agreements and expectations of coverage. And now therefore be resolved that the library board authorizes the return of all temporary disability insurance contributions deducted from staff paychecks from January one twenty twenty three through December thirty first twenty twenty four. And be it further resolved that the back wages for the two employees that applied for temporary disability benefits in twenty twenty four were denied will be paid subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the collective bargaining agreement in place for the relative relevant time adopted this eleventh day of March twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five uh, by the Edison Public Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Alan. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Hey, do we have any board member comments?
Want me to speak on this a little bit? Um, just to to make everyone aware, what happened is back in January of twenty twenty three, the library started taking paycheck deductions for the temporary disability insurance. Uh, it was being sent to the state and being held by the state with no notification that the library wasn't enrolled in the temporary disability program. Um, the only way that the library became aware that this was going on was when two employees were denied coverage on the basis that there was no coverage. So through the work of Alan and I think Amanda, uh, they reached out to the state. They were able to recover all of the funds that had been paid in. Those funds are now going to be returned to the employees and to make the employees whole who were denied coverage, they're now going to be paying their full salaries in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. So it's, you know, it's an unfortunate situation. Uh, the library is now enrolled as of January first. Uh, there was a board resolution in December, I believe. So this will not be an issue going forward, uh, but for now, uh, to make everyone whole, they're going to return the money and pay the full salaries of the employees who were denied coverage.
Great, thank you. Um, I just, I just want to say, um, I want to thank Alan and Joe and Amanda um, for working on this. I know there was a lot involved in this and trying to figure out which way to go and, and, you know, keep it in the legality of everything. Um, and I think we really have come to a great solution. Um, and it's something that, um, you know, we're putting out there just so residents, employees, anybody that has questions about it. Um, it's the resolution, you know, I think Alan said we're going to be able to post.
It'll be posted.
Posting on the website, so it'll be out there for anybody that, um, you know, wants to read that. And if anybody does have any questions, feel free to ask, um, you know, direct them to Alan. Um, and um, I think this is really good. It shows uh, the transparency and it shows that we support our employees and it shows that when we do have an error that we are there to solve it. We're not going to hide anything. It happened. We know what happened. We figured out what happened and we have a solution. And we're going to make the employees whole. So I, I think, um, you know, as a board of trustees and, and, and those that worked on this, we should be very proud how we're handling this situation. So just wanted to mention that. All right, if we can have a roll call.
Miss Mead?
Yes.
Miss Pam?
Yes.
Mister Patel?
Yes.
Miss, uh, Kabadi?
Yes.
Miss Singh?
Yes.
Mister Romano?
Yes.
Miss Leary?
Yes.
Mister Divasqua?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um, a resolution to approve the minutes. Mr. Kabadi, if you would, please give us a summary of the minutes.
Um, minutes of the Edison Township Library Board of Trustees meeting of February eighteen twenty twenty five. Um, present Fiona Mead, Jyoti Pamele Makula, Trions Patel, Pallavi Kabadi, Rinky Singh, Joseph Romano, Anthony Divasqua. Absent Katrina Leary and Richard Brescher both excused. Also present Joseph Collumbit, Board Attorney, Alan Climen, Library Director, Debra Sarr, Assistant Director, Amanda Hoyle, Administrative Operations Manager, Michael Worth, Coordinator of Marketing and Community Engagement. The president called the meeting to order at seven oh two P M. He led the salute to the flag and the open public meeting statement was read. Roll call taken. The minutes of the regular open session of January fourteen twenty twenty five was approved. Mr. Divasqua announced that the Clara Barton Library is now closing and that they are in the planning stages of implementing Clara Barton Community Connections in March and April. He also stated that the construction for the main and north Edison branches are ongoing and on and are on a good trajectory forward. The bill list dated February ten twenty twenty five was approved. Michael Worth joined the meeting at seven twenty eight P M. to discuss the proposed new library logos. Mister Climen stated that the third proposed option aligns with the direction that the library wants to go and recommended that option. The resolution to approve the newspapers of record for twenty twenty five was approved. Resolution to extend the time allotted for public comments at the library board meetings to four minutes was approved. Resolution to amend the bylaws of the Edison Public Library Board of Trustees to establish the Patron Services Committee was approved. Resolution to allow treasurer, president, and director to make the decision to roll over the CDs was approved. After public and board member comments, Mister Divasqua put forth a resolution to go into closed session to discuss personnel. Closed session was entered at eight fifty six P M. Motion to return to open session was issued at nine twenty three P M. On motion and second, the meeting was adjourned at nine twenty four P M. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Miss Mead?
Yes.
Miss Pam?
Yes.
Mister Patel?
Yes.
Mister Kabadi?
Yes.
Miss Singh?
Yes.
Mister Romano?
Yes.
Miss Leary?
Upstate.
Um, and Mister Divasqua?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
And I believe that, um, uh, the, uh, minutes for the closed session were distributed, uh, tonight by the Township Attorney. It should be, um, should have been under your agenda.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Back.
Roll call?
Speed?
Yes.
Miss Pam?
Yes.
Mister Patel?
Yes.
Miss Kabadi?
Yes.
Miss Singh?
Yes.
Mister Romano?
Yes.
Miss Leary?
Upstate.
And Mister Divasqua?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Okay, we're going to the president's report. Um, I have to say there was a lot of stuff going on with the library system at this point. Um, the, so it's February twenty fourth, we had the groundbreaking. Um, and it was a great celebration. We, we had um, a good amount of public officials there and, and it was a good uh, good push for, for the renovations that we are having at, uh, at the North Library. Um, the other thing that happened is Alan and myself, um, spoke at a council meeting, which we're going to be doing pretty regularly just to update the council, um, let them know what's happening and, and, you know, it's another avenue for the residents to be able to hear what's happening with the library. Um, the more we put out there, the more support we, we can get from the council and from the residents on what the library is doing. Um, another thing is on, um, this past Sunday, um, we had two events at the main library. We had, um, Holy Zumba for Kids, which I was told. Um, there was about fifty four attendees. There was twenty five kids, which was the maximum they could take. And the other ones, the other, uh, people that were there were the adults and people who were just looking on. And then I actually attended the afternoon with my son, um, the Irish balladeer, Richard Stillman, which was, um, it was, it was great. He was an Irish singer, played guitar, played a small accordion, played a banjo, played a penny whistle, had a parade with some of the kids around the room. Um, it was, it was a fun time. It was really enjoyable, um, to, uh, to see that. Um, and I'm sure as we'll hear from Alan Moore, you know, with the construction going on um, at Maine and, and North Library and, um, you know, looking at what's happening with, with Clara. You'll hear through, uh, the facilities report and, and update from Alan on what we're going to be looking forward to with, uh, Clara. So, um, like I said, there's a lot of exciting things to, to look forward to. Um, and that's what I have. So, um, let's move on to the financials.
We, um, our, um, first pages are our bank balance sheet. Um, we now quarterly, um, moved, uh, at the end of this month, we'll be moving some funds from the, uh, main capital and the North Edison capital um, into our operating, um, uh, accounts to pay for, uh, some of the, the projects, uh, we've been working on. Um, the, basically, we are only looking at this point of two months of, uh, financials. Everything at this point, um, is on target. If you look at, um, your admin statement of revenue and expenditures, um, we did receive in February our hourly payment, um, of one million, uh, one hundred sixty four thousand, five hundred ninety dollars and ninety one, uh, cents. Um, the bill list, um, generally, uh, I was, I'm, I was kind of surprised it was small, this small. Uh, we only had one major, um, uh, bill from, uh, G Meyer for, um, renovations. Um, and the second largest bill we have here is from T B S, Today's Business Solutions, um, who we have been working with, um, for our new, um, update of technology, uh, and equipment. Um, uh, just as a side note, um, we are, um, probably this month we'll see, um, hopefully our new equipment in the main, um, uh, meeting room for new projection equipment. Um, we have several other things on order, so, uh, new scanner for this building and a new scanner for, um, the main library. Um, and once the, um, uh, new tables are, um, I'll say electrified, um, we'll be putting out our whole caveat of, uh, computers, um, for the, the public. Um, it's basically, um, that's, that's kind of it. Does anyone have any questions about anything on the, the bill list that I could answer for them? And you can see some of the phase one furniture at Maine, uh, is here as well on the, on the list. Um, of course, purposes, we're already going to be starting to order the furniture for the lower level. Um, and we will probably shortly start to look at our initial, um, furniture purchases for the North Edison branch so that we get them in, uh, in time. So all of these projects are all overlapping, uh, each other and we kind of look at the main library as, um, two separate projects upstairs and downstairs from, um, uh, just general, uh, for us. Um, we probably, um, we're not sure yet, but, um, we've been going month to month with our janitorial services contract, uh, and most likely, um, we will, um, once we get settled, uh, in North and everything is up and running, um, we probably will not be, uh, renewing that, uh, anymore. Um, we basically, the North Edison branch is a, a small, the temporary is small. This building is small, the main library. Um, we currently have, um, uh, three custodial staff um, who all agree that, that they just as well can, can do what, what the, um, janitorial services do, uh, but even better. So I was going to take them up on it. Um, and, um, that money, uh, going forward, once we stop, can be used for other, other things such as programming or books or whatever. So, um, we did, uh, allocate a whole year's worth, but, um, in talking with, uh, the staff, they, 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 we can, they can do it themselves. So that's kind of the bill list and a little bit of facility, but I didn't want to, it's kind of, I mean, basically, most of what ends up on this bill list ends up in three different categories. Um, books, buildings and grounds, um, and, um, technology. Those are the three big areas. If you look at this, of what it comes down to, what we spend each month. Um, you know, uh, supplies are, are small amount in compared to, you know, our book number is over five hundred thousand dollars just on, on materials alone. So that's a, that's a, a, a big number for us. So those are the three. And, um, this year we again put in, uh, the legal is two hundred thousand again for technology and we probably will definitely use that as we replace all this equipment with the new building. So I thought of, um, we didn't have a lot on the agenda, just go over a little bit more of the bill list. So, um, everyone has an idea of what we, what we spent our money on. And I think this bill list that Christopher does is very clear and very simple. Um, and if there's anything else that anyone wants added, just, uh, let us know and I can have them updated.
The Today's Business Solutions, number forty one seven, what exactly is that?
They are the company that, um, replaced our print management system. Um, they are the company that, um, replaced our terminals that we use uh, when people, uh, use the copy machine to pay, um, to, um, the, uh, and that's in all the building. So, um, um, I missed it with T B S, the, the copy machines and the
Printer.
The printers, those two, um, we had to buy, we bought all new updated, um, coin and bill receipt things that, that accept credit cards and Apple Pay, um, so that we're keeping up with what, uh, people want. So it was an upgrade that for us and actually it happened last year, but they, they forgot the bill list. So, um, this actually was last year, um, and we've been working with them now for a, a couple of months. Um, and we are expecting, uh, new scanner for this building to come in in probably next couple of weeks uh, for the public. Um, the one that we put in at North, uh, is very, very, uh, easy and very user friendly. Uh, and, um, we'll have a new one for the main library. Um, people do, you know, people do, um, this is tax season. It's the busiest time of the year for us, for people doing scanning of a lot of stuff. But, you know, that's what we're here for. You know, we're, you know, we're, that's what people come to the library for. You know, we're a one, we're a one stop in the community where they know they can get these services. Um, and the plus of it is not only do they get the services, but if they can't figure out how to do it, there are people that actually will get up and help them. So it's not a staples. We are, we, we are, um, a double full service location for, for everyone. And, uh, people of all ages, um, use, use the scanner stuff. Um, I'm looking forward to getting those new ones.
Great. All right. So, uh, do we have a motion to approve the bill list dated March eleven twenty twenty five?
Motion.
For a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Miss Mead?
Yes.
Miss Pam?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Mister Patel?
Yes.
Miss Kabadi?
Yes.
Miss Singh?
Yes.
Mister Romano?
Yes.
Miss Leary?
Yes.
Mister Divasqua?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, did you want to talk about the C D?
Uh, yes. So, um, what, um, we did was I looked at the projections of, um, what we're going to have in capital, uh, outlay. We're coming into the last couple of months for the main library plus all the technology. So what we did was, uh, we renewed, um, the, uh, two of the CDs, the one for the one million and the one for five hundred nine. It's over that with interest. Um, and those have been renewed for six months, um, because I'm anticipating that five hundred thousand we're going to need for, uh, North, but we're not going to need that until the fall. Till the fall, um, and the same with the million is kind of our reserve once everything's done. And the, uh, other five hundred thousand we cashed out. It was, uh, it was transferred to us and it's in our bank account, uh, ready to be used. That was transferred to the main, uh, account. So, um, I, and I will thank, I, I have to, to say, I will continue to thank, um, uh, Renee and Lisa at T V Bank who are just wonderful to work with. Um, I, they, I, I, I mean, I can't be entirely of them. I mean, it's just email, everything gets done. I don't have to remind them or any of that stuff. So, yeah, we have a good relationship with them and so that, that works for us.
Great. Perfect. All right, um, the director's report.
Um, I'm trying, gonna try to keep it short, um, under two hours. I, I mean, basically, um, uh, we'll start with North. Um, the, um, uh, North Edison Branch at seven, 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 uh, Grove, uh, currently has a partial fence around it. Uh, the contractor has already just done that as a precaution. Um, and we expect that tomorrow or Thursday, the entire building will be emptied. Um, the, uh, moving company that we have worked with has been marvelous. Um, we started with them, uh, last Monday and Tuesday, and on Tuesday and Wednesday, um, they delivered for us to nineteen oh seven Oak Tree Road, um, all of the equipment and books and things that we would need, uh, to get started, um, over there. Um, so they've been, they've been really good to work with. So, um, basically, um, we, um, had a couple of hurdles in regards to nineteen oh seven. So we all learned a couple of things that if you leave this commercial space, you need to get things inspected and you need to have certificates of occupancy and insurance. The insurance we do. Um, also, we are currently waiting for Optimum to install, um, full internet. Um, so staff will be able to use, um, hotspots to at least get started and to, um, uh, actually, uh, get the place in order. So they will, uh, be starting there, um, tomorrow. Uh, and, um, we think we could actually, um, open, uh, a soft opening on Saturday. The only thing we would not have is internet for the public if it doesn't happen. But they will with the hotspots, be able to check items in and check items out for people. They'll be able to pick up their homes. They'll be able to sit and read a newspaper. They'll be able to read a magazine. Um, they'll be able to choose books. Um, uh, I think the only board member is Tony who has actually been at nineteen oh seven. Um, and so, um, we'll wait for a couple of days, um, and we'll have a, like an open house once, um, everything is done, probably. Um, I'm not going to say next week because next week we're concentrating on the community conversations here. Um, but, uh, it could be that, um, we, we just do some coffee and cake, um, during the week and have it available to people. Um, people are really, um, anxious for us to reopen. So, um, I want to thank the, um, the custodial staff, uh, as always, for the good job that they've done both at seven, seven, seven. And you see, we're now using numbers. We don't, we don't need to name it. It's now, you know, everything's a number. So, um, from seven, seven, seven to, um, nineteen oh seven, that's, that's seven. I think they need to play those numbers. Um, uh, and so, uh, I think the, the next group will be the staff who will be doing that. Um, uh, the main library, we, as I mentioned before, will be start to, um, look at furniture for the first floor. The first floor is entirely gutted and it's really freaky, um, because the beating room is gone, the bathrooms are gone. Uh, Deborah's old office is gone. Everything's going to be, uh, redone down there. I think it's going to really be super. They've already started framing. Um, so you get to see where some of the stuff is going to be. So, um, and they are anticipating uh, that, um, they'll work downstairs, um, because this is the, the bulk of it, which is Um, because this is the, the bulk of it, which is doing what they have already done. Um, should be done somewhere in June. So, um, and I think they've been, G Meyer has been pretty good on target unless something happens that is out of anyone's control. So we really are anticipating if um, we finish that in June. Um, July uh, will give us a time to get all the stuff back that's in storage. Um, get the two floors set up the way we are, because we can set up downstairs without closing upstairs. Um, except for, I don't think we're going to have to. Um, so we're looking at, uh, to be able to um, have the whole main library done um, by the end of uh, July. Um, and that, that's really exciting, exciting for us. Um, uh, I left on the back table. Um, we're gonna be promoting it more this week, a couple of mailings, the community conversations. Uh, the first two center on the Clara Barton Branch and the uh, Clara Barton Community. Um, how can the library best serve the community? And what can we do um, to be a better neighbor in the community? Um, how do we more actively participate uh, in the Clara Barton neighborhood? And what's going on that we have in the past? So um, we've uh, started to make uh, contact with our architect. Um, we have to give him the drawings, so he at least has a, a start of what's, what's going on here. And I guess the next couple of months, um, we'll be working with the facilities committee um, to look at um, what are the needs. And I think these two conversations, the one in March and in April, will give us a better idea of what the community is looking for this library to be. Um, and uh, you know, kind of future thinking. Um, so those pretty much, I really have been working on construction projects. Um, I didn't know I was gonna be an engineer when I took this job. Uh, but um, I, you know, it's a good learning, good learning experience. Um, uh, this way, I'm sort of ready for the last library. Uh, the first two, we learned a lot the first two. And now, uh, this one I'm gonna say is gonna be easy, compared to the first two. Um, so pretty much that's it. Um, Deborah, you have a couple of things, some new staff that you want to introduce?
So we want to welcome three new staff members. Um, Lucas Luis, who is a full-time I T person, he's joined Kevin and Pretty. Uh, Jonah Klevsky, hopefully I'm saying that correctly, he is part-time. He's also I T, has joined um, Kevin and Pretty. And Rose Ead, who is a new teen tween librarian. She'll be working with Caitlin on doing programs for the team.
And mainly, uh, mainly everyone. So we'll have, uh, we now have a children's life, a full-time children's librarian in um, both um, libraries. We have a, a full-time teen tween librarian in both libraries. Uh, and those staff, we already have more, more than half time children's librarian here. And um, both Rose and Caitlin will be taking turns here once a day. So we'll have more support of um, the librarians to do um, things through, we're pretty much um, you know, zero through that eighteen age um, with, with programming and, and with collection development and stuff.
Yeah.
And going out to the schools, which um, we have been encouraging. Not only the staff, we have been getting a lot of calls to go out to the school. So we're really, really excited to do that. And we're very happy. Um, I wanna, I should also thank D P W. Um, they are the uh, Department of the Town who uh, services Bookmobile and have for probably the last thirty-five years. Uh, not this one, but yet they've always been. And um, they uh, were, seem to work miracles. They really do, they really do a great job. So um, I'm gonna uh, send a, a note over there and say thank you. So stuff that wasn't working before is now working. So yeah, but you know, the older Bookmobile is starting to really show its age. It's got electrical problems, like, you know, it's, it's, so um, uh, at some point this year, we will, we will talk about, you know, the new one, yeah. Right? So that's kind of my report. Great?
Okay, uh, we'll move on to um, committees. Um, we'll start off with the, actually, I'll just say this, the facilities and Bookmobile did meet. Um, Patriot Services met last night, so we'll do that report um, at the next meeting. So Kat, if you would like to present the facilities.
Thank you. Um, so we met, the facilities committed, committee meeting took place on February twentieth. Uh, for Maine, we kind of broke this up by branch and the Bookmobile. For Maine, as Alan mentioned, we're looking at new furniture. Um, some other upcoming things to look for, again, kind of overlapping with Alan, a lot new technology. Um, projector system going in, so that's really good change for all of our patrons that will be there. Um, we are looking into discussions for a potential backup generator. Should we need to use this as an emergency shelter? It doesn't look like there's any need at the moment, but that's something forward thinking that we can be considering. Um, North, again, my update on here was the lease should be signed this week. Obviously, we're far past that, but we are in coordination uh, for permitting and inspect, inspections, like Alan had mentioned as well. Um, Clara Barton, uh, Arcari Iovino is now involved to give an evaluation of the branch and look into how we can upgrade it, how we can refresh it, um, just make it a little newer. You know, again, once we have these meetings with the community, then we will be able to get a better idea of what the community is looking for, for this branch. And then work with Arcari Iovino to kind of bridge that gap. Um, one of the considerations that we discussed was adding access to the doors on Hoover Ave up here. Previously, the issue was staffing for both the first and second floor. Um, have staff who may be able to do it. Um, and that's approximately a six to seven thousand dollar cost, so that's something we're looking into as well. Um, again, looking for community engagement for the Clara Barton Branch. So for the friends, only to call you out right here, but for the friends, as many people as we can have, you know, participate would be great. We're looking for feedback from the community, um, folks that regularly use the library, folks that don't usually use the library, who may want to see something that may draw them to the library, anyone and everyone. Um, one other thing we talked about was just this, you know, visibility for the branch, as Alan mentioned as well. Um, we talked about maybe doing some events over at the Stewart's Lot, um, and exploring that as an option or other locations around the Clara Barton Library, so we can attract people to it since it is a bit tucked away. Uh, the Bookmobile, I'm glad to hear that Public Works is doing well. We have a good Rhodes Garage. Um, there's a, the one thing we discussed was there's a conference in October. Um, usually where all the Bookmobiles are present. Um, so our staff will be there, I believe you and a couple of other members. Um, to take a look at those and then explore all our options before we make a decision on looking into any potential changes or upgrades or uh, purchases to a new Bookmobile. And as another note too, we did discuss at the meeting um, about additional signage for Clara Barton. Since that meeting, um, we as in library township are working with uh, Public Works on getting that signage into. So once we have that design, you know, the proposed design from the vendor, we'll discuss that at our next facilities meeting as well, make sure it's up to everyone's standard, and then go forward from there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so just one um, comment I want to make is about the stored slot. I did contact the, there's a nonprofit organization that actually runs or manages that. Um, so I did send an email to them, um, and I'm asking them for the daily, weekly, monthly, and possibly long-term lease. Um, just options, just to see what, you know, we might be able to use it for. Um, Alan and myself have been discussing, like, if we have an event here and we need parking, we could possibly use that for parking. Or we're looking at over the summer, um, you know, having some events there. You know, we, we, we discussed um, last night at the Patriot Services, possibly, you know, having a kids band, having events for, you know, kids throughout the summer, you know. So it's just something that, it opens us up to be able to do um, more events, you know, in this area for, for those residents. Um, again, first, you know, once I get the information from, from them on pricing and, you know, how we could figure that out. Um, that's something that I, I think would be really beneficial for, you know, the library to promote. It helps, you know, promote the library, and it also is a place for, you know, residents, parents to bring their kids to something like a Friday night or a Saturday. Um, so there's just a lot of ideas that that opens us up to. So we are in, in, um, you know, in talks, in, in figuring that part out. So that's, that's really exciting. Um, does anybody have any questions for, for me or Kat about the report at all? We're good and good? Okay, great. Okay, um, no unfinished business. We do have new business. Um, Alan, if you would like to read that resolution?
Uh, yes. A resolution to approve the Edison Public Library to apply for a grant from the New Jersey State Library for Rev, it's Rev two fifty, which is the American Revolution, will be two hundred and fifty uh, years next year. An approval of eventual acceptance of any funds offered. So we need a, a board approval for us to apply. Um, we have had initial discussions with the Historical Society and they're more than happy to um, co-sponsor uh, that with us. Um, and we'll probably be taking the lead. Um, we're not sure how much we're asking for, but the way that the State Library has kind of put this, we might ask for five thousand and they give us twenty, you know, twenty-five hundred, which is why they asked this resolution be of eventual of, of any funds offered. So um, uh, I think there's a good opportunity for us. And we're currently developing um, the speaker's list. Uh, we want to try to do some things for all ages. Um, so a little bit different, and as you know, um, Edison was uh, one of the locations for one of the skirmishes, I'll use it, battle of, of Short Hills. We know, and we've got the pond or whatever, but uh, this whole area of New Jersey, New Jersey was, New Jersey was the American Revolution for seventeen seventy-six, seventeen seventy-seven, seventeen seventy-eight. So there's a lot, lot of stuff. Um, but we're gonna um, probably be looking at um, uh, not just the revolution. Um, the other thing we are thinking about, but we might be going, it's solely sidebar, but just to let you know, again, we do. Um, next year, uh, is also the one fifty for Edison establishing his laboratory at Manuel Park. So um, we gonna see if we can do something. We, we've done prior programming with the West Orange Public Library. Um, of course, the other great place in New Jersey that has the Edison history. Um, and I think we're gonna be looking at some co-programming and maybe getting some funds from the Council of the Humanities or the Historical um, uh, Council on the, on uh, Jersey Council of History, whatever that is, next year. So we're, we're looking at this kind of stuff to supplement what we do. Um, but it also, I think, gives us a little bit more publicity, that we get the, the funds from the, from the state organization. About Edison, right? Edison has a great history, you know?
Great. Okay, so um, we have a motion.
So.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Miss Mead?
Yes.
Miss Pam?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Miss Kabati?
Yes.
Miss Ting?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yeah.
Miss Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Deepaswala?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Right. Hey, um, let me skip. Hey, um, before we go into uh, public comments, I just wanna bring up two things. Um, the first thing is, is that, um, at my request, Alan did purchase a clock that will be visual for everybody to be able to see, so it's not just my phone here. So uh, we're waiting for that to come in, and uh, most likely at the next meeting, we'll have that all set up. So that's something that will help us manage the public comment time. The other uh, thing is, I, I would like to address, there was a question, I guess, at the last meeting or two meetings ago about um, who authored the resolution for the um, the new law firm. So to address the questions raised in the library meeting, um, and on social media, I would like to provide some clarification. I authored the resolution to change the law firm. Um, the question that was raised, that there were some legalese um, of the resolution. Um, I have to say, there are numerous AI tools, samples online that can assist with much matters. I am not a lawyer, but there are many samples out there that you basically can look at, fill in what you want, and you're all set to go. Um, so I do take full responsibility of that. And um, just to answer any questions of why I did not answer that at that meeting, um, I do have to say that as we do read in our document, that we do not have to answer um, any questions. But we'd like to when, when possible. And um, you know, for myself, I like to um, think about what the answers are that, you know, that I'm gonna provide. I don't want to just give them off the cuff. Some might say this is a simple answer, but again, I want to go back, I want to think about it just to make sure, you know, I'm, I'm getting older. So did I really do that? Did I not? Uh, you know, so I just want to make sure that, you know, so that, that's something that, it's not always paid or just avoiding the question. If I can answer that question, it might be that night, or it might be in the future with a well-versed answer that, you know, hopefully will satisfy the question is. Um, so I just wanted to uh, to bring that up. And um, we're gonna go into public comments, so let me read this. During the open portion of its meetings, the library board provides the public with an opportunity to offer comments regarding matters pertaining to the library. Pursuing to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, N J S A ten colon four through twelve, the board is entitled to permit, regulate, or prohibit public participation in its meetings. Each speaker, speaker will have a maximum of four minutes to speak and should limit comments to matters pertaining to the library. The speaker will be directed to include their remarks once speaker time has expired. A speaker may not speak more than once during the same public comment period. No time may be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. Speakers are asked to begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Board members are not obligated to answer impromptu questions or address remarks from members of the public during the public comment period. Speakers should expect the board to refrain from engaging in a dialogue, except to the extent necessary to clarify the speaker's comment. A lot of time for this speak, for speaking is the only method to address the board during the public comment period. The board will not entertain questions or comments called out from the audience. When appropriate, the board may refer inquiries and items brought up during the public comment to the director or other staff. Speakers and members of the public comments should at all times be maintained proper decorum and shall make their comments in a civil manner. I'm gonna move this over to you, so we can look at that together. Do we have any public comments?
After after Pleasant Avenue, so I want to welcome to District Eight, where this Clara, where this Clara Barton Library is situated. That is the district that I go ahead and represent. So glad that we have a meeting that's over here. I also want to let you guys know that I've been reached out by self-presidents about the closing of the library. And I keep telling them that, now you guys have said publicly multiple times that you're not closing it, so I'm telling them to, now, respect that they have said that they're going to work on this library. I want to thank the board members, the mayor, the council, friends of the library, and other dignitaries that came to celebrate the groundbreaking of the North Library Branch. Nice for you guys to attend. I want to thank Secretary Kabati for being this, they're really good. I want to discuss a few things that I saw in the December tenth, twenty nineteen meeting that was shared by a citizen. Uh, Mr. De Pasqua, you spoke up and brought up a lot of ideas and concerns for the library. I am wondering how many of them happened. I'm not gonna listen because I don't know what my time is, and if there's time, I will ask about them. I also wanted to share some outstanding advice that happened um, during a motion, that I think would be great advice for this board and the council here. And this was from um, Councilman Joshi at the time. I disagree with the township attorney all the time. I don't need to follow this advice. It is your decision as a board member, regardless of what is happening right now. You don't have to listen to the library attorney, period. No governing body has to listen to the attorney. You as a trustee have the right to agree or disagree with your council. So I hope that you guys will take that advice when you guys make decisions. But as I started to think about that meeting, I saw something that was a little confusing, and in January, I talked about something about procedure. So I was wondering how did Mayor Joshi now, uh, why was he able to speak during a motion? When in January, Councilman Brecher was unable to, time and time again, he said this and that. When in January, Councilman Brecher was unable to, time and time again, he said this is not a time to speak. So again, I have a problem with procedures not being followed, or maybe I just don't understand it. Somebody can enlighten me at some point. Uh, but it doesn't make sense. So it just seems like it was a political move at that point. Because in twenty nineteen, uh mayor was allowed to speak at that time. So the whole issue that I have that I keep bringing up, and I think that um Mr. De Pasquale or President De Pasquale, you mentioned a couple of other answers for some of my concerns, is that the issue started with the mayor with his appointment, then followed with the council who moved very quickly to go ahead and take new membership into the board. And we clearly see that you want to remove, or at least some people want to remove Pat Nasty and Sue O'Neil. So it just seems political to me. And then at the first meeting here, the new board decided to not allow Pat Nasty to come in as a holder. But here we only have eight members. Three months later, we're supposed to have nine. So Kat, I'm wondering if you can discuss if there's any person that you guys are of interest to make the nine person. So what I think that um could have happened in the last meeting, President De Pasquale, was that you might not have wanted to answer my questions, but the way that you just kind of dismissed my questions, it just moved on to the next thing. I think that you could handle that a little differently. Perhaps you could have said, we all make mistakes, but perhaps you could have said, you know what? I will answer your question. Um, give me some time. I wanna think about it. And that would have been much more appreciated than what I saw happen. Um, the other thing that I have questions were that were still not resolved is, why was there a rush to get going to reorganization to get rid of the lawyer? Couldn't have waited the next time. Also, the resolution was not on the agenda. So that just seems, again, like a political move. Did anyone here know about the resolution prior to being brought up? It wasn't on the agenda, as I said, and did people get a paper copy? Wouldn't it be considered best practice for any new library board member to abstain from voting on something as critical as this rather than casting a yes vote? Or would it make more sense to ask questions? If you probably don't know the background, the history of what was going on, maybe you do. So I fully expect that you guys will challenge things rather than just say yes. And finally, the last question that wasn't answered was this. What happens to the salary given to the former attorney? Not right now. I'll look into the salary issue. I'm not fully familiar with what was going on, but I'm happy to look at that into that and report back to you.
Great. Okay. Anybody else? Yes.
You can go first.
Also, just your date Pleasant Avenue here. Um, and like up there said, this is, this is our our home district. So we're grateful that you're here and we're grateful that you're um attending all three of the libraries and and not having this in the, you know, council chambers. So it actually gets a little bit more engagement, not as much as we thought we were gonna get today, but hopefully uh as the months go by, we have more engagement in these meetings. Um, a couple of topics that I wanted to to bring up. On the February twenty-sixth, we were at the council chambers um at the council meeting um to recognize um our past trustees. And that was a a nice way to say thank you for um, I mean, Lisa had, what, eighteen years and Sue, um, I'm not sure how many years Sue had, but Pat had fourteen years. So all these years of of volunteering to be a part of this board and to make such impacts in the library, very grateful that they were recognized. Um, and uh grateful from personally as well um for everything that they've done here, which includes creating the Friends. Um, our next Friends meeting is next Wednesday here at the Clarar Barton Library on the nineteenth at seven P M. Um, the goal is to to get more volunteers, right? So we're a year old. Um, and we're trying to get more people to come through here. In the last, you know, two months, we've had less than ten people that have um signed up. We're talking about a hundred and eight thousand people in Edison. And I'm not even at a hundred and fifty, you know, folks that are coming through here. So um, I'm gonna keep saying it. I'm gonna keep going to every forum that I can. The request is join. The request is volunteer, do something that needs to come through because we wanna have larger events. We wanna do all these things, but we can't unless we have the volunteer um core that's gonna be able to engage and support um as we come through here. So that's me being a broken record, come out and support and um voice your concerns. And then the community uh conversations that are gonna be happening on the twentieth, um which is next Thursday. So next Wednesday is the Friends meeting. Next Thursday, um it's a community conversation. It's all here at Clarar Barton. Um, and hopefully we'll be able to get some volunteers as well um to to engage with them there. Great. Thank you for the time.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Before you do speak, I just wanna, I just wanna say something just again for clarity, transparency, something that you brought up. Um, the representatives that we have on the board from Board of Education, um and um the mayor, I'm sorry, um, they are actually board members. They're actually library trustees. Where the representative from the council is not a trustee. So the different, there's a difference there where the the representative from the council doesn't come into the closed session and the representative is not a member. So that's why they are gonna speak, like Mr. Brecher is gonna speak during the public comment. So I just wanna bring clarification to that, just so you, I don't know what, I wasn't on the board in two thousand nineteen, whatever they decided, how they wanted to handle things. But I feel in in checking with with the lawyer, this is the 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 right process that we will follow. Um, it's not to quiet anybody down. It's not to, you know, um, and I did speak to Mr. Brecher about this and, you know, we we're, you know, so and so, yes, and you can speak, Mr. Brecher. I just wanted to clarify that. So go ahead.
And just to clarify.
Yes.
When Sam Joshi was a councilman, he interrupted the meeting. He turned this library into a circus. Um, then he got elected. And now he's a mayor and he turned the council into a circus. Um, but that's okay. Um, what I'm here to talk about wasn't that, I just had uh I I I'm gonna give the board members a recommendation. You can take it or not take it. Um, I'm doing this as a resident. As a resident, I recommended the Board of Education at the time. Take my advice and let me look over documents or administrative meeting for the construction projects. And they decided they didn't wanna do that. I ran for the Board of Education, got elected, and then found out that they had four hundred thousand dollars in change orders that technically should have been paid by the architect. Okay, subsequently, that was rectified with the Bush Law Firm, um where everybody took some responsibility. After that, I got out of the council. And I recommended to the B A and everybody there that you would allow me to look at your drawings and everything else. They neglected to do that. Um, we got to a point where they had change orders that were out of control for the Jets Field. It went from five million up to twelve. The only reason why they finally hired someone was that I finally sat down with the B A and I said, listen, you know, all you're doing is just putting more daggers in the mayor by letting this cost overrun continue and continue. I said, you're gonna have over five hundred thousand dollars in additional cost overrun. And she goes, where? I said, it's right here in your meeting minutes. But she doesn't know because that's not what she does for a living. The mayor doesn't know. I mean, the only one that knows is someone that does this for a living. Um, so I'm gonna offer the board the the same offer that I've offered to the board bed and to the township. And that is, if you send me your meeting minutes to look at them, I'll tell you that you have changes or or issues that you are gonna have coming up. Um, after that, that would be up to you, you know, you guys to decide, unless you've hired a construction management firm. Um, and I don't know that you did. I just heard about the project that you did. Um, but I would do this like as a resident, not as your council person or something like that, that you work for all the time, type of thing. Um, you all know how to get ahold of me. So if you choose, you can, um, he has so yes, I mean, that's that's what, um, that was it.
Great. We we appreciate that. And Alan, if you wanna respond to that?
I just for clarification, um, for the main library, um, we basically, since it was a small project, we basically um relied on the the uh architect and their staff who are the project managers. So I would go with them. And we have been very fortunate that pretty much uh Jim Meyer and company, they've been there every day on the side and we have anything we we talk about. We do have a project manager for the North Edison Ranch, um simply because it was a much bigger, bigger project. Um, and also, as you know, um, basically, the main library, um, everything was done through the architect. The M E P, everything was done. North Edison was a little bit of a different config, that there were all these outside um uh consultants who were working. The M E Ps, they're all separate. So we we felt that we needed to to um go. So we have a project manager of that. Uh, and we're very happy with the work he's done so far. He very much a taskmaster.
So, um, okay, I mean, I just, like I said before that, did that with the architect as a manager. That's where I found the four hundred thousand dollars in changers that we got John to push to kind of get away. Um, but I I put out there as much I prefer not to do it, but I think so, but it but it's just out there.
So do we have an open invitation if we uh we call you and perhaps want some advice on something? Would that be okay?
Yeah, I mean, I find stuff in just reading material, reading minutes. Or, you know, I mean, simply put, I'll tell you this, when a contractor says I need clarification, should I go right and go left? Let me tell you what happens. Right is a change order and left is a change order. It's a change order either way. Um, the the idea is how do you get out of his change order mode, um, type of thing, like point and have, you know, issues on the ground. But yes, it's out there. We can talk, you know, afterward.
We appreciate the offer and and we definitely would pay that consideration.
I think it's a one, a wonderful offer.
And otherwise, we'll remain quiet.
Well, you'll have after this, we'll be bored comments. All right, um, anybody, anybody else? No?
I just wanna say, um, Michael Worth, coordinator of marketing for the library, um. Alan didn't mention it in his report. Kat, you're probably gonna bring it up, but the Saint Patrick's Day uh uh event is Saturday, March fifteenth. Uh, the bookmobile will be there. So community is, of course, come out, see the bookmobile, especially our newest trustees. Come see the library, the Saint Patrick's Day.
Right. It's become a tradition. We've been there all of every year.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, um, we're gonna close uh public comments. Okay, just again, clarification. We're not gonna, we don't need a vote for opening, closing public comments, so we're not gonna go through that. Uh, we don't need to do that. Um, does anybody have um um announcements?
I'll piggyback off that. So this Saturday, we have our Saint Patty's event. Um, and again, the one thing I want to mention too is it's at the Stewart's lot. So if you haven't been to the Clarar Barton Library or this area before, it's a great opportunity to come out. I agree with you, our new members or anyone who has yet to see the bookmobile, if you've never seen a bookmobile, it's really cool. It's one of those things that you may think you know what it is going into it, but you really don't until you walk in. So come on out, check it out. It'll be a good event, a fun event. Um, got pretty much rained out last year, so fingers crossed that won't happen this year. But thank you, that's all.
Is there anybody else? All right, um. Okay, I'm sorry? If you you can, if you have something to report on. If as long as, if if you want to, it's it's up to you.
I don't think we have any bamboo, essentially.
That we, that we're passing, that might need to be modified because it seems like could be issues here and there. Um, and then we have a uh like adopt an area program where businesses or people um can adopt certain areas and kind of beautify them. You know, we've done them in the past. You've seen the signs. And when you enter into town and all that, and it looks great. And we first do it, and then nobody maintains them. They fall into disrepair. So I guess it's time for us to start the program up again, um, to make it a little nicer again. That'd be it.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, and I just want to encourage the trustees to look at the calendars of the library and attend some of the events. Um, again, it's a great encouragement to the staff. And, you know, like I said, I had a great time the other day with the Irish singer. It was really fun.
You were in there the whole
Yeah, it was great. I enjoyed it. So, um, all right, so we're, it's not on the agenda. I'm I'm gonna, yeah, um, it's not on the agenda, but but I'm adding to the agenda for board member comments. So um why don't we start with Mr. Romano?
Thanks, uh, Mr. Brecher. Uh, and the rest of the board members, especially Mr. Brecher. I was told I can't sit next to you. I don't know why. There could be a problem. For trustees that have seen me and talked to me and been in meetings, uh, there's certain things that I've talked about, uh, and it's called errors and omissions. I think Mr. Brecher understands those. And to be perfectly honest, uh, that's why construction consultants are our friends. They're not our enemy. I've asked questions of the trustees and the public. Uh, there were just certain things that just didn't make sense. And in the past two years, I finally got information back. The plans that we put together were put together by architects and consultants. And then all of a sudden, we found out that something's wrong here or something's wrong there. And I keep talking about errors and omissions. And that's one of the big problems that we have. Now, that's why we have a consultant that doesn't work or working for us. And that's to make sure that if there's an, if there's an error, we're not charged for it. If there was an omission, in other words, the building is supposed to have thirty-two rooms. And there's no water for the lamps? There was an omission. So the facts are is that Mr. Brecher's right. Not that I would vote for him, but I'm sorry, Rich. But the truth of the matter is, is that I'm a truck driver. Alan operates the library. Board members or trustees here have other jobs. But the professionals, I have, this is really bad. It it's bad. I'm not a professional. But when I see an error or an omission and we get a change order, I don't wanna pay for it. That's why Mr. Brecher is absolutely right. I just wanna make sure everybody understands. A small error like the pitch on a roof. Well, it's not that bad. But if the scupper on the roof isn't big enough to take all of the water in the rain, that's a problem. That's where errors and omissions or somebody that could look at this is a plan and go the pitch should be going this way, not that way. And then we wind up eating the cost. So I'm really appreciative that we have managed to get construction consultant who actually was at some of our meetings and didn't like me, which was very good. I appreciate that. Yeah, he didn't like me a couple times. But you see, to the public, Mr. Brecher is one hundred percent right. When it comes to something called we the people, it's we the people, that's our money. And we take and take on a big project like asbestos tiles. Oh, we only took off two or three. Oh, yeah? Well, I'm sorry, but then we found out there was a problem. Well, the fact of the matter is is that was an error. Not an omission, that was an error. And according to the contracts, according to errors and omissions, we don't eat that. That's why we have to take and really scrutinize and talk to these people and make sure that it's one hundred percent right that we don't pay. So our students, our customers, you know, that that our customers or our students and our public. that they don't get, not for nothing, they don't get charged more than what it's supposed to be. For Mr. Brecher, well, I hate to say this, God, for Rich, to be perfectly honest, thank you. We we need your help. And a lot of people don't understand that. So I'll be calling you personally anyway. And you know, the thing is, you know, at time of the morning that I gotta call you, you're always running somewhere. You have a good day, Rich. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you for keeping us accountable with uh errors and omissions. It's something important. So anybody else, any board member comments?
I just, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, Andy first.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the cost for the logo, like it was, I guess we were not here before, but for this rebranding, like what is the cost on what?
The logo was. For the consultant was total was five, was five thousand.
And then any additional costs going forward?
No, the only additional cost is we need to uh purchase uh new software to be able to manipulate it with the AI. But other than that, we we own it, it's ours. Uh, Michael and Victoria are gonna use it and play with it. That was it.
They did, they did offer their assistance. I mean, they were, we would be purchasing their time. Um, if we need extra training, yeah, for training and whatnot, or or any additional services. So they did put themselves out there, but there was no, it was it was really quite a bargain, bargain, right?
Yeah. No, not that.
Yeah?
No, that's it.
Did you?
Okay. I do have some suggestions.
Yeah, sure.
All right. So there are few people come forward and uh they have three different requests, like three different category. Um, one parent came to me and then few supported that do we have a special needs kids program and special area located for them? They wanted it.
We don't, we we have an occasional, but um now that we have a full um staff, um, we're actually be looking at it. We've done some sensory story times. Um, but we are also looking at developing a special needs center as part of uh our new um history center downstairs, because that room is quite big. So um it's something that um is in the on the agenda for us to absolutely look at. Um, we already have a relationship with the Alliance for Independence down here. Um, uh, we've partnered with on some uh something there. I say they're right here because they're on MBI, I'm trying to think which one, that way, no, they're that, they're that way, yeah. Yeah, um, so it certainly is something that we would really love to do.
Okay, um, that's good to know. Another thing is, um, do we do anything for seniors? We cannot give them note to library.
For seniors?
Yeah, how are we planning to reach out to them?
Well, uh, there's two things. One is, if you look at the programs for this branch, uh Liz, who is the branch manager and is our older adult services librarian, a lot of the programs for older adults are actually here at the moment. We also do um the chair yoga for them on Mondays. We do the tai chi for uh the older adults at the main library on the alternate weeks. Um, Liz goes out to organize groups, any anyone that's looking for us to do that. And I would still say that we serve most of our seniors through the bookmobile.
Okay.
So the bookmobile is either seniors or kids. So um we are also um now going to um uh do, and I you're you're getting me to, because I don't wanna, uh, we've got a whole bunch of new initiatives for May, which is older Americans month. I don't want to announce them yet.
Okay.
But I can talk to you offline
Yeah.
about what we're planning to do, um, because I'd like to get them all online correctly. So that's gonna be our big kickoff um to expand our our programs for older adults. Um, uh, part of uh the problem was uh with even doing programming, this was the only viable auditorium
Mm-hmm.
that we had. Um, main library, as you know, up and down north, we're, we will be able to do small programs at the new uh facility. So um that will be able for us to uh rekindle. We also have um ongoing programs on health and wellness uh from, um, I guess, now not JFK anymore, it's Meridian Health, um, that come in uh almost on a weekly basis uh to do um those kind of programs. And those are particularly the done at twelve o'clock. Um, those are particularly uh aimed towards our seniors. So there's always more we can do.
Yeah.
Um, and I think part of what we're also looking at uh as part of the community conversations, what we do and sent out a survey, is what is it that people are looking for?
Yeah.
You know, with what, what is it that they can't get elsewhere that we can provide? So we're looking for that feedback. Um, also, um, we will be announcing uh two advisory boards, which we've had in our volunteer policy for years, but we have not uh actually done it. One is a parents advisory board, uh that will work with the children's and teen staff um to better enhance the programs we do. And the other one is an older adult advisory board. So we're, we're gonna try to reach out to people uh in the community who would like to meet with the with the staff, so we can improve what we do.
Okay, that's great.
Can I just say one thing about that? Um, just because the question, I guess, was coming up, do you think that the communication is not out there to the seniors?
So that's why I'm asking.
Is that, okay, that's what I was just wondering.
So. But if I can just interrupt, if if and and he's gonna laugh because he said, he's, he said to me, he was the youngest person in the room on Sunday.
Right.
So, um, our our weekend programs, when we do the weekend programs, um, the concerts or anything, predominantly it is um older adults.
Okay.
Um, so it may not say older adult, but but uh when you do something on a Sunday afternoon at one or two o'clock in the afternoon, um, I mean, he was, there were some kids there, but he was, he was kind of joshing, he was the youngest one in that room. Uh, so uh we we do have those kind of programs that um they're not advertised as older adults, but of course, all our programs are open uh to anyone who wants.
So the one question I had was, I'm sorry, I just told you, um, was like, do we have communication to the senior centers of what's happening? And if not, is that something maybe we can do through the township and or however, you know?
Cat and I have this email out that we have to follow up that because I didn't get a response. Um, we wanted to talk to the senior center and um uh and many veil.
Oh, you're right.
Right.
I thought you and Tuck were the right, but then we didn't hear back, you're right.
To talk and now doing more with that.
Yeah.
Um, we do do the bookmobile stock.
Right.
Um, both at the senior center and at at Mini V Vale, Mini V Vale.
And do we have like the flyers of what's happening in the bookmobile?
Of what they're.
Yeah, like the seniors, is there something that when they, can we hand them a flyer with the venue? No, you know, I mean, if we're going to see them, that'd be a great way to have, you know, hey, this is coming up for seniors in the next month or whatever, just an idea, but continue.
So let me tell you, um, I have visited many senior centers, um, tried to do as much as possible I can solve them. And one thing I have found among all the senior centers and met and talked to them, uh, technology is the issue. Uh, whenever, you know, there are few of them, um, they are able to go to, you know, internet and do their basic things, most of them, they cannot. So I was, I was thinking, if we can have any program that is for seniors where we teach them technology, there would be a lot of people are very interested along.
I uh think once we we maybe get a little bit, um, so we have been working on um our our, uh, we call it our literacy department, but it's more than literacy, because everything is about literacy. So we currently have um one staff person who works part-time, who is of uh kind of our computer trainer. We have open hours that people can come in at all the branches. Um, we uh were awarded a um contract from the state library for um a full-time staff person from AmeriCorps, who is going to be a digital navigator. Uh, and so that person, probably if we could work something out, maybe with the senior center and Mini V Vale, could go out and do programs there um as a potential of of doing that. But we're now, and we're, um, those would be the full-time and the part-time. We can always do programs for seniors, um, we just need to find a place and uh the time. And um maybe you'll give us a list of those folks who really want, we call them.
Yeah.
Because I would rather schedule it for a days and times that maybe work for them
Mm-hmm.
rather than us scheduling something and that's not when they're available. So if you could maybe get back to it, what would, what day and time would work for them? And then we can schedule stuff. That's not a problem.
Okay, um, I'll get back to you. Maybe we can talk offline.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
In the meantime, to fill the gap until they are digitally literate and can go to online and see their things and schedule and whatnot, can we have a flyer that we can hand over? These are the, these are the uh events that is happening whole month, and they could do it very nicely because I have seen them, wherever they want to go and they're interested, the flyer really works for them.
Well, um, uh, separate from the monthly calendar?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because we've got, literally, we do flyers for every program, so they're out there, we just need to make sure. And if you have specific people or whatever, we could send you, I can uh send you some of the flyers that you could just share with them. You know, we could send it to you electronically if that makes it easier. Um, and 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 spare, and it would be great if the other trustees have particular interests and things that we could send flyers to you and you share them with people that you know who might be interested.
Um, we can also, I don't know where, uh, it's just go to Mini V Vale, the bookmobile, can we, I can tell you the areas where they can go and we can actually cover maximum uh seniors. Uh, I'll come back to you with a list.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Also regarding the special needs kids, uh, the program that you said, can we elaborate and it happened to all other centers, not just here?
Um, what do you mean?
Like you said, the program, uh, the special needs program that happens over here, right? A few programs.
Not sure when the last time they did it.
Okay.
Um, they may have done it more at May and then they actually did it here. Um, so we could, we can check to see, and I'll, I'll talk to the children's staff, we'll probably do for a like programming meeting uh next week, once the thing settle at North. Um, because we usually plan a couple of months in advance, so I could talk to them about. Um, and we do try to do, there's two things. One, we try to encourage each one of the staff to be a little bit different, so that we're not doing all cookie cutters exactly the same thing three times everywhere. Um, so um now that we have, um, for example, we just started different kind of programming at at North, bilingual programming, English, Spanish, for example, um, uh, story time, uh, because the newest children librarian is bilingual. Uh, and so um we'll, we'll meet with all of them and talk about this as initiative that we we would like to do moving forward. And I think um uh board president, uh, Deepak Swal had talked about um us having this be one of our initiatives uh this year, um, when he uh was elected president in January, if memory serves me correct.
Yeah, um, and the one comment I just wanted to say about that also um is if you, I would also encourage those parents, the special needs children, to even attend the, 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 you know, the other, the the actual meetings that are happening, even if it's not for special needs. You know, if the parents are there with them and they're doing a craft or something, you know, it's not, you know, it's not like if, you know, if the parents are helping them,
Right.
they should, you know, they could do something, they could, you know, so I would definitely put it out there, well, just because it doesn't say a special needs program, it doesn't mean your child, you know, shouldn't be there, you know what I mean? So I would encourage them that, bring them to, you know, bring them any events at the library and and, you know, see how it works out. And, you know, there's some children that can, you know, can can go to those programs without a problem. Some might need assistance. Um, but, you know, I I think that's, that's something that is is, you know, something that you can just, you know, uh, promote to them.
Okay.
It's just go to any event, doesn't have to be labeled special needs. Well, we're gonna have some in the future, you know, but, you know, that's, you know, like any of the music programs and stuff, I mean, you know, bring, bring your kids to it. It it's fine. I mean, it's not a problem, but it's really what I would, I would do. I've done that with my kids. You know, I brought them, you know, as as everybody knows, my my two sons are special need. And I brought them to, you know, typical, if you want to use that word, programs that didn't have to be a special needs program. You know, and that's what I would encourage definitely parents to to look at. So, you know, but yeah, we are definitely, it is an initiative, and and I know Alan has that on his list and and, you know, it's one of the things that amongst everything else that we're doing, um, you know, to to uh to get things moving on that too, so, yeah.
Great. Um, so do we have those programs listed in the calendar?
Everything's listed in the calendar.
Okay.
Uh, uh, the calendar is usually completed, hope, at least a week before the start of the new month. It goes out everywhere. Um, and we, you know, we're sending email blasts um five days a week, and they go out to about twenty-five thousand people at this point, thirty, something about thirty, thirty thousand people. Um, we also do repeats, so there are things that go out at the beginning of the month that have all the monthly programs. And each weekend, Friday or the Saturday, the programs for the following week go out just to remind them. And then the other mailbook, me, email blasts, um, are to focus on programs that are are bigger or or we would like to get more people to attend. So, yeah, it's going out to a a big audience. Um, and um probably the next time that we meet with Dr. Alderelli, um, we could talk about if there's a better way for us to connect uh with some of the special needs children in the district as well. So we're, we're due for a, like a, every couple of months, we meet with him. And Joe's been at at most of the meetings and and Mr. Tough and and um uh some other folks, so we've got a good working relationship with the board of that. So um we'll talk to them as well, because they might be able to help us in um what, what, what is it they can't provide, that perhaps they can make some suggestions for us that we might be able to do.
Great, um, one more.
No, go ahead.
Um, do we have any yoga or meditation program in library? Okay, okay, so.
Uh, actually, I just saw one that's coming up for us, right? Meditation, or am I, oh, tomorrow, meditation. Yeah, I'm doing it. And we do the chair yoga here in this room every other Monday. And we do, we started the, the, we do start the Bollywood dance, right, that's at Maine? Or we was gonna start that Bollywood movement, I don't know. On um, I'm, it's kind of the alternate week for one week is chair yoga, the next week will Bollywood uh movement.
Right.
So, yeah, and and we've always had meditation. Uh, we're actually even starting a staff wellness uh committee uh at their request. Um, and so they're organizing that, so I'm not sure what they want to do, but I'm waiting for a report.
But they'll? Sounds good, yeah, that's good. Somebody reach out to me, he's good in meditations, I'm, I'm gonna just forward his uh resume to you.
Um, do you remember where it is tomorrow? It's virtual.
Okay.
So anyone could attend from anywhere?
Yeah.
So Alan, how do um residents sign up to get on the email? Do they go to the website?
Um, ninety-nine percent of the people on our email list
Mm-hmm.
are are uh library card holders. Other than that, they can go on the website, on the bottom of it, um, is um the email list. Uh, they can sign up for the email and then that goes.
Great.
Um, Michael actually edits that or uh seven to the database.
Yeah, he's got it done automatically into the database.
So that's another thing, you know, with the trustees, if people ask you questions, what's happening with the library? Uh, you know, tell them number one, to get a library card, that should be the first thing. And number two, um, to go to the website and sign up and and, you know, that'll give more people the, you know, opportunity to learn what's happening. Um, anybody else? Any other comments?
Thank you very much for you.
Big question. I have a suggestion for the older uh senior adults, that uh people like to play some games like mahjong or, you know, some board games or something. If they know, once a week, they can come for a couple hours to the library or, you know, someone can teach something together for the people to look forward to come to the library. Our senior center, I don't, uh, senior center doesn't have it, or we can coordinate, whether it's a senior center or in the library. Our senior center, I don't, uh, senior center doesn't have it, or we can coordinate, whether it's a senior center or in the library, for a certain period of time, I mean, a couple hours a week, somewhere they can gather. This is the request I got from the community, so I just want to let you know.
Uh, you know, when I'm, we, you, maybe we're thinking the same thing.
Probably, I mean, Liz has been doing those. The older adult, or older adult services librarian has been doing, she's been alternating senior trivia, and then senior game day. Um, it's usually in the early afternoons. Uh, I think the same day, I think Tuesdays, I wanna say. Uh, so she's been alternating for, for games and trivia, just to get seniors out and, and interacting with the, with each other a lot.
And if, if we do have a lot of people that wanna do mahjong, we could put something in the email blast and see if people are interested. What library is their nearest?
We can bring it up at the community conversation.
Yeah.
Every, the, the issue seems to be the senior people might not be getting the emails, so maybe get the flyers out to them at the senior centers, and that way, maybe they won't
Yeah.
complain as much that they don't know what's going on, I guess, right? So, the flyers might be the solution for the senior.
I think I, uh, I was gonna say, I'm older than Joe. I think that might be the older one.
Alright, anybody else? Any, anybody else? Nope, alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. Everybody, aye? Alright, thank you, everyone, appreciate you guys.